Good morning, I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the July 9th, 2019 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you're in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased that you took time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunkler?
Present.
Mrs. McDougal?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Please join us for a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of Tina Parent, a teacher at Columbia Elementary and custodial supervisor George Bishop. Thank you. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and I would also like to rec- before we do that, I'd like to recognize that up here today, we have Dr. Beth Theddy sitting in for Dr. Mullins while he is on vacation with his family. So at this time, I'd like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Theddy an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. We can start with Mr. McDougal, Ms. McDougal, sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you. Just two things, I wanted to go ahead and remind people that Cocoa High School's chorus is going to or working very hard to get to Carnegie Hall, and they have a fundraiser in Cocoa Village Playhouse. Tickets are $25, you can purchase them online, and if you don't really want to hear them sing, I think you're missing a great thing. You can still donate, they have a GoFundMe page, and you can also send a check to the school, but make sure you put that it's for the Carnegie Hall Choir. Also, I want to encourage my fellow board members, what I had it, I hosted a launch for Brevard Schools Foundation, which was wonderful, and I think I encourage you all to do that, it's, as you all know, they do a lot for our teachers and our students, and they're always looking for mentors, so if you have some extra time and, or you're retired, they could use a mentor. And if you have any questions about Brevard Schools Foundation, please see me afterwards, I'll be glad to share that with you.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal, Ms. Belford.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Want to first give a shout out to the adult education graduates. Ms. Archer and I had the pleasure of attending their graduation a couple of weeks ago, and it was the biggest graduation that I have seen at adult ed since I have been attending their graduations. Parking was a challenge, which is, you know, speaks volumes about the level of involvement in the event. And a couple of really cool things, their graduations are always awesome because you hear great stories of the challenges that their graduates have overcome to get there. This year, there were two sets of sisters, not twins, that were graduating together. One of their students was celebrating his 18th birthday on his graduation day. One of their students came to Brevard County speaking zero English, and through their English Language Learner Program at Adult Ed was able to both have a good enough grasp of the English language to actually speak at graduation, and was also earning her GED. Perhaps the coolest thing, though, that came out of the graduation, there was a mother and son that were graduating together. And she had said that she took her son to adult ed to sign up for classes because she wanted something better for him, and while she was there, she thought, you know, if I'm going to be driving him here every day, I may as well register myself. And so they were actually graduating together, which was really cool. So many thanks to all of the staff, the teams at our Brevard Ed or at our adult ed sites for all of the hard work that they do to help those students be successful. It's always a great time to be there. Also, our FSA, ELA, and math scores came out, as you all know, recently, and I know that we have done some information out to the public regarding our overall district performance, but I wanted to give a couple of shout outs. I think you all know that Coquina and MEMS Elementary have gotten some additional support from the district, and they have been moving in a positive trajectory, but again, this year, they have shown phenomenal grades in those two schools. In their English Language Arts, Coquina had double-digit increases for their grade three ELA, Level 3 through 5, which is always great to see more of those students moving into the upper tiers. But perhaps most importantly, they saw a double-digit decrease in their Level 1 students for grade 3 ELA. MEMS, double-digit decrease in their Level 1s for grade 3 ELA, double-digit increase for their grade 4, Level 3 and 5, and double-digit decrease for their grade 4, Level 1. So those are just a couple of the highlights, I don't want to drag on forever, I'll be happy to share with you guys the information if you, I pulled all the data and made my own spreadsheet, I know that doesn't surprise you. But anyway, want to give a definite shout out to all of the individuals on the teams at Coquina and MEMS Elementary especially. Imperial Estates had some great numbers too, double-digit increase in their ELA grade 4 and double-digit decrease in their Level 1 grade 4. So lots of great things going on, and I know it is obviously hard work on the students' part that gets them there, but I think we also have to recognize that our teachers, our principals, the social workers that are in the schools providing support, all of those people are playing a role, and we're seeing some great positive changes. And I have one more kind of shout out and information item I'd like to share. You all know that I sit on the FSBA Legislative Committee, and Ruth Melton, who is our legislative person with FSBA every year, creates this book, we call it The Book of Ruth, and it is a summary of our legislative session, from funding to actual bills that are passed. She does a phenomenal job on putting all of that together, and I cannot thank her enough because it is incredibly tedious and complicated, and there's a lot of information that she has to be able to catch, but I wanted to share with you all and with our audience a couple of the highlights from our summary. I sent out to the Board, I tried to condense The Book of Ruth to about seven pages for you all, so you didn't have to dig through all of it. But a couple of things that I thought were really interesting from that update, we've seen that there's been a significant increase in our FEFP funding for this year, but I think it's important to note that we saw some changes in the things included in the FEFP. So our real increase statewide in FEFP funding is about $300 million. They, the total increase is $782 million, but out of that, $245 million was the inclusion of Best and Brightest into our FEFP, so that's not actually new dollars. The new voucher program increased the FEFP by about $130 million, and obviously, we know that's not going to schools. Some interesting factoids, there are about 200,000 more students today than in 2007, 2008, but we still have not returned to the same funding level in 2007, 2008. The increase that we are seeing in the 2019-20-based student allocation of $75, which we've all been very excited about because it's so much better than last year, in reality, that's a 1.79% increase in our flexible funding, which is the funding that we use, of course, for salaries, for increases in insurance, electricity costs, all of those things. So while 1.79% sounds not great, in 2018, 2019, our .01% increase was .01%. And so I think if you look at the trends on BSA, you can certainly see why we face some of the challenges we face. Some highlights of the appropriation, 100% of the PICO, which is the capital outlay dollars, is going to charter schools this year, $158 million, and we have cringed about that in the public schools, but the good news is, that means that we don't have to share the 1.5 million, so the theory is that that will wash out. Some of the specific categorical areas that they look at, VPK, which we have all talked a lot about, the importance of VPK and getting students to come into kindergarten ready for kindergarten, we are, we were spending more in 2007, 2008 than today. We've seen an increase in the overall funding in VPK, but we, it is because of an increase in students, not because we've actually increased per student funding in VPK. But that's one of the things we'll want to keep on our radar for next year, there does seem to be some bipartisan support to improve VPK, and I think that's critical to success in K-12 as well. The district cost differential, which we lose millions of dollars every year in Brevard through the district cost differential. They have completed the study on that, but they have not yet made any changes to it, and so hopefully, next year, we can get some change through on that. For those of you not familiar with the district cost differential, basically, what the state does is looks at the cost of living in our district, and they determine the amount of money that we have to raise at the local level, and then there's a multiplier. So if your multiplier is less than one, your district actually loses money to other districts because your cost of living is lower. So for example, Orange County, who has a much higher tax base than us, also has additional millage and additional sales tax, their multiplier is over one, so they actually receive additional funding every single year through the district cost differential. So getting that changed at the state level would be very helpful for Brevard. We talk a lot about our required local effort, and one of the calculations that the FSBA determined is if they had left our millage rate where it was supposed to be, there would have been about $350 million more available for education in the state of Florida. Our ESE guaranteed allocation is still below the '07-'08 allocation, our transportation funding is below the '07-'08 level. Digital classroom is going away, Mr. Tiedem, I apologize, I know you know that, but we've seen a huge decrease in the digital classroom allocation. Some good things that have come out of it, the mental health assistance allocation increased this year, plus we have some additional flexibility in the way that we can use those funds, which is good. There are two new allocations and special categories for computer science certification and teacher bonuses in computer science, which is great. We did see an increase in our FRS contribution rates, the total cost to school districts is approximately $35 million in the increase in our FRS. There are some changes to the MSCS, which I think you all saw in your briefing. Some other great things that have come out, we've got some flexibility in our teacher prep programs. The general knowledge exam, which has been a challenge for a lot of teachers, they are giving us some flexibility there. It is now only required if a person serves as a classroom teacher, which is great because I know we've had some struggles with some of our social workers and guidance counselors getting through that general knowledge exam, so that gives them that flexibility. We also now have three years for new teachers to pass the general knowledge exam, which is great, so we can keep quality teachers. And there's a great new workforce education program, HB 7071, that creates some additional paths for students who may not be really academic in nature and are looking for ways to get certifications and still graduate. So that will be, I think, a great benefit to a lot of our students here in Brevard. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Belford, we appreciate you serving on that legislative committee, is that the correct term? And reporting back to us in a nice summarized form. I know a lot of us follow it all closely, but I think it's important for the public to hear what's going on too and how it affects our school district. Mr. Susan.
Thank you, I just wanted to take a second and say thank you to the Joneses for all of their work for the, in our education that we've had throughout the Brevard Schools. Mr. Jones was an SRO at my daughter's elementary school, and I remember going in there for the first time, thinking, oh, I'm going to walk in here, and he's the first person you saw over at Capeview, and it's pretty intimidating, and he had that entire school in line. And Ms. Jones and I worked on several projects, and I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you guys have done. Next thing is, is that today, we have Adrian LaFite is being nominated to the Brevard Schools Foundation. I just want to give him a shout out for all the hard work that he does for our school district volunteering and everything else. He is the heart of the sales tax initiative that we had originally, and he continues to give back to our community, and I just wanted to take a second and say thank you to him too. I did want to say on the jobs, because I'm always talking about the jobs, the county finally signed on, they have an MOU, and they're going to start hiring our kids for the jobs programs for the internships over the summer and throughout the year. It was a, it was a long, lengthy process to get through it, and they finally did. And tomorrow, throughout the rest of the week, at the Home Builders and Contractors Association, one of the jobs programs is called BRIC. There are kids, there are 75-plus kids, learning on how to do their OSHA certification and a series of other things as they get ready for their second round of internships for the summer, where they're working in construction fields across the county. That's only a fraction of the rest of the jobs program that we have. So the county's on board, I know the port, you're working on getting the port, and a bunch of other cities and municipalities and counties, and they're doing amazing. So if anybody wants to go to the HBCA in the next couple of days, yeah, okay, that's huge. All right, there we go. I got one from him, look, there you go. Anyways, I also wanted to say that Who We Play For has screened 2,000 kids now. 2,000 kids. They've triggered 12 that said that they had some heart complications, and one of those kids has already gone in and gotten surgery, was one of our staff members, was a teacher at one of our local high schools, and she is over, she did a video, they went on Facebook talking about how awesome this was, and how her kid may have saved her life. So kudos to Who We Play For and the organizations that are putting this together, such an amazing job. And those of you that don't know, these are the heart screenings where if a kid, a lot of our athletes have a heart screenings with an EKG, the test to see if they have any kind of heart murmurs, that then triggers them to go get it checked out, and sometimes they have to have corrective surgery, so that we don't end up in a situation where they end up passing on our fields, or we have a worse situation. So that was that one. I did want to say, it is kind of crazy on the legislative end, when, and thank you so much for your update, that every time I go to the store, I see more lottery, right? I see more money that's being dumped into a program for lottery that was originally sold to the communities over going to education, and all they did was use it as a shell game for what they were doing. And that's sad, that's the first thing, is that they are using what could be one of the worst things to do to a community by expanding that habit and then not funding the education program like they were supposed to. The other thing is, is that last year alone, the state, they increased over 3%, but our education budget only increased over, just a little over 1%. So they're not even keeping with, at the state level, the actual amount of money that the state is receiving, they're not even giving that same amount to education, which means that if we just took the same amount of pie that we had the year before, we would be a 3% higher, but they actually only received 1%. And until the legislation, legislators in Tallahassee hear the voices of the people over raising the amount of money that goes towards our schools, it's going to continue to go down. And I will say, that's nothing against our local legislators, because Debbie Mayfield and the rest of them, Tyler Saroy, Thad Altman, everybody, they doing a phenomenal job at making a fight for us, but there are a bunch of other ones out there that don't, and unfortunately, our guys are outnumbered. So I do want you guys to know that that fight's coming, and I think we're all going to be in alignment to go after it. The other thing, I want to say thank you to Donnie Felix for inviting me to come be on a panel for the Haitian American Association of Brevard. For those of you guys that don't know, we have a significant amount of Haitian Americans that are inside of our community, and one of the problems that we have there is, we all talk about ESAL, 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 right? But when you go to learn about ESAL, ESAL's not just Hispanic, Spanish-speaking, but it's also Haitian, which is more Creole. It's also Russian, and when I was a teacher, I had, I had probably six or seven different, in one year, I had six or seven different kids that were Spanish, that were Haitian, that were Russian, that were all trying to learn English. So a big shout out goes to the organization that you were, the group that you were talking about in the evening, Ms. Morris runs it, I used to teach right next door to her, for adult ed parents to be able to come back in and transition. But the other problem that we have as far as a district goes, is that the available resources at the adult eds and everybody else, there's just not enough for those specific groups. The Hispanic, Spanish-speaking population, we have good setups, but when it comes to like the Haitian group, when I was teaching adult ed at night, when they went to go take their, when they went to go take the adult ed test, you could get that in Spanish, you could get that in Russian, but you couldn't get it in Haitian. So I actually had to drive a kid to Miami to take the test. So there's some gaps there, right? And that's not our fault in any way, that's not, that's not him. So what they offered, the Haitian American group, offered to send in volunteers to work with our students, which was huge. So if we have, I'm going to have them contact our office, and if we have students that need help, they would volunteer to go in and work with those kids specifically at those schools, and I think that was a great thing. But I wanted to say thank you to Donnie Felix and the Haitian American Association of Brevard, and I think that that's, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan, Ms. Campbell.
All right, first I want to, oh, first I want to recognize Ms. Troisi and Jupiter Elementary's team for their summer reading clinic that they put on with their, some Title 1 funds. They invite, you know, a lot of our schools are doing the third grade tutoring, the kids who made a one on the FSA, excuse me. But she wanted to expand it, they offered this summer reading clinic for the month of June for all grade levels, kindergarten through sixth grade, and they were able to come in and get reading assistance. My favorite part of what they did was they invited the parents to come in, and the parents could drop them off and come back a couple hours later, or they could come in and just see their students, their children in action, see some learning strategies that might help them not only through the summer, but in, during the school year. So, and they were able to give the students free books, and they had just a great participation, and so excited to see what they're doing with their Title 1 funds. I want to thanks, I give thanks to Chris Altz for giving me a tour of the half-cent sales tax work being done at Central Middle School, and happy to say that they have, right now, the best communications equipment room in the county. You can be jealous of that. All right, so it was really cool getting to see the guys, and it's not just about making the internet faster for our students and for our teachers. In today's world, that room, that kind of infrastructure runs our security systems and our air conditioning systems and our, our fire alarm systems, and so all of that is integrated, and so some, a lot of that half-cent sales tax work that's going on, we'll never see it because it's in the walls and it's in the wires, but it's really important and exciting to see that we're getting that kind of progress. I want to recognize someone really special in the security office, and Major Walters, I don't know if she's here today, but tell her later, there is a wonderful, super rock star volunteer in the security office, her name is Carol Patrick, and she spends 15 to 20 hours every week in our office, working with people who are coming in for their fingerprinting and their badges. She does it as a volunteer, and she's actually a volunteer for the Sheriff's Department, correct? But she's doing it here in our building and for our, for the benefit of our employees and for our students. So I just want to recognize Carol Patrick and just give her a huge shout out for the work that she does. I'm not really sure your office could run without her, not the way that it does, so she, she's a rock star and we're grateful for her. Two things coming up, the back, there are two big back-to-school giveaways coming up. One of them is at Center Point Church, which I believe is actually the largest back-to-school giveaway in the county, and then of course, our Brevard Schools Foundation one, that, the Center Point Church is doing theirs on July the 20th, and then Brevard Schools Foundation is doing theirs on the 27th. Let me just talk about Brevard Schools Foundation one really quickly, I know that right now, they're collecting their backpacks and supplies. The supervisor of Elections Office started yesterday collecting those, so, and you can go to any office near you, if you live in Palm Bay, down on Cogan, or across the street here, there's one in Titusville, and then the one that's on Sarno in Melbourne. If you, backpacks, pencils, paper, everything, school supply, you can drop off at those locations, and they will be handing those out to the students who have registered that are on our free and reduced lunch list. Center Point Church, I just want to shout out to them, they have been doing this for several years now, like I said, it's the largest one in the county. Not only do they give away school supplies, they do back-to-school haircuts, dental exams, vision screenings, they have tons of giveaway, everything is free, and we're just so thankful for our community partners who are loving on our kids and loving on our families. So just really excited to see both those community outreaches that can help our families in days to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, Dr. Theddy.
Thank you, Mrs. Duskovich. I do have a couple of things, I want to give a shout out to our facilities team, they are working fast and furiously to complete all of their summer projects prior to the start of the school year. It's no small feat to get everything done that they have to get done prior to the first day of school. Cabinet, staff, teachers, they're all prepping for the start of the new school year. Next week, we have several trainings going on for our principals, assistant principals, teacher leaders, department and school secretaries, getting everybody up to date and ready to go for the 19-20 school year. And I would like to echo what Mrs. Belford said about the FSA scores, and kudos to our schools for their improvement, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Theddy, and all of mine were taken, so. I have, I have nothing to share, which will just help the meeting go by quicker, so let's get back on task with the meeting. This brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Theddy.
Mrs. Duskovich and board members, on this morning's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition, one resolution, 19 consent items, six action items, and three information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public on Tuesday, July 2nd. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, receive revisions.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Theddy, will you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, Mrs. Duskovich, there are four persons on this agenda, item for the Board to consider.
What are the wishes of the Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motioned by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Mr. Susan, any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Theddy.
We will begin by recognizing Ms. Anitha Jones on her retirement from Brevard Public Schools. Most recently, Ms. Jones served as the principal at Titusville High. Thank you for your years of dedicated service to the students, staff, and community of Brevard.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, thank you for acknowledging my retirement, and I'm already starting to reap the benefits of it, I can assure you guys of that. I have been an educator for almost 31 years, and I can say unequivocally that the large majority of my career I have truly enjoyed. I have been able to spend a great deal of time working with students, and I consider that to be a blessing. They are a great joy. I would like to take this opportunity to thank my family, first of all, my husband for his unyielding support of me always, my son, Marcus, who's here, my daughter, Jada, is unable to be here because she just graduated from USC, and she's studying for the bar, my mother, who's here today to support me, and all of the community members who've come out to support me, to include my neighbors, my church family, my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, and everyone else who's come out to support me today. I would like to extend a special thank you to Ms. Rosette Brown for disseminating information about today's retirement recognition, I truly appreciate that. And as I move forward in my life, I can look back with joy and appreciate the great things that I was able to experience being an educator. I have no regrets about that, none. Students did bring me great joy, and I'm so appreciative. So for those of you guys who've come out to, to support me today, I truly appreciate that. After the comments section, I would like perhaps that we could leave and take some pictures, but it would be very remiss of me if I didn't take just a moment to ask those of you guys who came out to support me to please stand to be acknowledged. So once again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Before we go on, I wanted to take an opportunity, Anitha, on behalf of Dr. Mullins, to express my and our sincere gratitude and appreciation to you, and acknowledge your 27 years of service to Brevard Schools and your almost 31 years to students in general. You are, you are appreciated. Dr. Mullins wanted you to know that he was unable to be here personally, but he wanted to wish you all the best in your retirement and congratulate you on your dedication to Brevard Schools and your most recent service at Titusville High School. Thank you and congratulations. At this time, I would like to welcome two administrative staff appointees from the June 25th meeting who are unable to be in attendance. First, congratulations goes to Jerry Hanson on his reclassification from the position of teacher on assignment to the position of 10-month assistant principal at Astronaut High School.
Thank you very much, I'd like to thank Dr. Mullins and the entire school board for allowing me to continue to serve in the community of North Brevard, which has been fantastic for me and my family. I'd also like to thank Ms. Miller, who's actually here with me today, Ms. Tomlinson, who was at Madison Middle School when I was a teacher there, for giving me numerous growth opportunities, as she likes to call them, to learn more leadership, and also Mr. Gary Schiffern, who was the first principal to actually hire me. My family was unable to be here with me today because my son is actually an incoming freshman at Astronaut High School and refused to miss football practice to come with me, so mom had to stay behind to get the ride. But again, thank you very much for this opportunity. But again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Congratulations are also in order to Jasmine Baez on her recent reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher on assignment at Palm Bay Magnet High School to the position of 10-month assistant principal at O'Gally High School.
Thank you to the board. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. I feel very blessed and grateful for this new challenge. When I talk to the kids, I try to tell them that in every event, there is some learning and an opportunity to grow. So I take this as my opportunity to learn and grow within Brevard County Schools. I've had a great many people who have supported me, encouraged me throughout the years. I have my family here. This is my son, who understands what I'm doing, and I hope he knows that he's my why. My mom's here, who's always supported me in everything. My aunt came from Pennsylvania to celebrate with me. I know my brother and my sister-in-law couldn't be here, but they have my back 100%, so I'm grateful to them. Professionally, Dr. Sullivan, Ms. Bowman, Ms. Wybell, you guys have given me many nuggets of advice, and I greatly appreciate it. I don't know what to do without you. I've been a pirate all of my teaching career so far, so I'd be remiss not to thank the pirate community for everything they've done, all the words of encouragement, all the support. Mr. Kaminski, who I know every time I went into your office, you would listen to my complaints, my questions, and just help me grow. So thank you so much. Lauren Kingsley and Lauren Ferranti, they've also helped me greatly. So thank you so much. And I take this opportunity to take that foundation at O'Gally. So thank you, Dr. Sullivan. I made him a doctor. Mr. Sullivan, for taking this chance with me. So thank you.
Moving on, we congratulate Deanna Smith on her reclassification and transfer from the position of literacy coach at Turner Elementary School to the position of 10-month assistant principal at Enterprise Elementary School.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Mullins and the board and Ms. Klein, for this opportunity. I wouldn't be standing here if it weren't for some incredible people who have influenced me along the way. I'd like to thank Dr. Mella for believing in me as a leader and all of the support and guidance you've given me during my time at Turner. I can't thank you enough. The administrators that I've worked under, Ashley, Melissa, Tanya, I can't thank you guys enough for the opportunities you've given me, for trusting in me, believing in me, placing me in situations that have allowed me to learn and grow as a leader. I am going to miss working alongside you, and I can't thank you enough for all that you've done. My family, my husband is here today, my children are home, my parents are watching from home, all my family watching from home. I can't thank you guys enough for believing in my dreams and supporting my goals and always remaining positive. You guys are my rocks. I love you. My Turner family, I love you all. I wish you all the best. I'm going to miss you tremendously. And Ms. Kelly Dufresne, I am so excited for this opportunity and grateful and so excited to join the Enterprise family. So thank you.
Congratulations also to Jennifer Gonzalez on her reclassification from the position of 12-month assistant principal to the position of principal at Titusville High School.
Thank you, Dr. Theddy, school board, Dr. Mullins. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So many people to thank, Mike Alba, Molly Vega, my whole team, my mentor Sylvia Majuskovic, of course, Anitha Jones, for making me the leader I am. I'm so excited, I'm so honored to be the principal of Titusville. Thank you, I won't let you down. Go Terriers.
And last, but certainly not least, we welcome Hillary Poole and congratulate him on his appointment to the position of principal at Stone Magnet Middle. Mr. Poole is currently an assistant principal in Indian River County.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you to Dr. Sullivan and to the board and all of the overwhelming support that I've received since walking in those doors this morning. It's truly a blessing. I am very excited about this school year. I'm very excited to be back home. I'm happy to meet the staff, the students, and the community, and hopefully we have a very productive school year this year. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I'd like to introduce my wife, my daughter, and my mother, who have come here to support me today.
Boy, he almost got in some serious trouble right there.
Mr. Poole, am I saying that right? Is it Poole?
Yes.
You also forgot to mention that you are a former student of Stone Magnet Middle School. I think it's important for our community to know when people have come back and are serving in leadership positions in our community. So we're looking forward to you serving here in Brevard. Okay, we are on to the recognition of visitors. I know that a group of you said you wanted to leave after the recognitions, so we are finished with the portion of administrative staff recognitions. I don't know. Do you want to take a pause, Ms. Jones? Sorry? Ms. Jones was hoping, I think, to get a picture with all of the folks that were here. Do you want to pause briefly so that they can come up and do a photo?
Tell them to come up. Yep.
Yes. Okay, that's fine. Are we going to go to recess, an official? Just to brief them. We'll just take like a three-minute recess, just for the photograph opportunities. The board meeting is now back in session. Board, I'm going to ask for a little bit of reorganization for our meeting, just for a few minutes. Our public comment portion is a few steps down on the agenda, but we have two people that have signed up to speak on behalf of Mrs. Jones in recognizing her retirement. And so if it's okay with the head nod of the board, I'm going to let those two speak now, and then we'll move on and proceed with our agenda as planned. The two people that have came to speak on behalf of Ms. Jones are George Fason and Gloria Bartley. You have three minutes each to speak, and if you could come up to the podium. We'll start with the first one, which is George Fason.
Good morning. And Chairman and board members, I spent over 35 years in the system, and I retired back in 1995. And in the meantime, I worked very hard to earn a doctorate degree. And I'd like very much for that to be known whenever I'm presented. Thank you. I can get my papers together here. I'm Norma Jones. All of her life, I would say, she's a member of St. James African Methodist Episcopal Church, where she grew up and participated in our programs there. She attended Whispering Hill Elementary School. Ms. Belford, you might remember that back in the day. She also attended Park Avenue Middle, it was the junior high school at that time. Ms. Jones has made contributions to our North Brevard community that I wish to share with you. We were particularly pleased with the program that she established at Jackson, when she was the assistant principal there for, I believe it was in the dean's position, when she established a program there by the name of JAG. And that stands for Jackson Aspiring Gentlemen. And I tried to encourage the district to adopt that program, and I don't know where it is presently on the agenda of things to do. She also recruited over 300 businessmen and church people to participate as mentors for students at Jackson Middle School. That program was Jackson Ultimate Mentoring Program, and that was an acronym, JUMP. Another program that assisted children, especially male, black males, and programs where successful businessmen and church people would mentor them during their time at Jackson. Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Jones holds a bachelor's degree in business education and a master's degree and specialist degree from Nova University. She has been an educator that we were very pleased with, and we came this morning to honor those hours that she put in preparing our young people. And Ms. Jones, thank you for all that you have done for us.
Thank you, Dr. Fason. And we also are going to hear from Gloria Bartley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Gloria Bartley, and I have been asked by Reverend Bernard C. Wright, pastor of Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church in Titusville, to come this morning and express our sincere appreciation to Mrs. Anitha Jones on behalf of the Bethlehem Church family. Pastor Wright is recuperating from surgery and could not be here today. However, we would not miss the opportunity to let Mrs. Jones know that we applaud you and your 31 years of your service to the children and families of Brevard County School District. Thank you for all of the sacrifices you have made. Thank you for the role model you have been. As you start a new chapter, please know that we wish you the best today, enjoy today, and every day. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley. Thank you, Ms. Jones and all the supporters. We are now going to move back to the general portion of our school board meeting. We are on to the recognition of visitors. Dr. Theddy?
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich. This morning, we will be recognizing the Office of Purchasing and Warehouse Services for receiving Florida Association of Public Procurement Official's Award of Excellence in Public Procurement for 2019. Robin Novelli, chief operating officer, will facilitate the presentation.
This morning, I'm very excited to announce that the Office of Purchasing and Warehouse Services has earned the Florida Association of Public Procurement Officials Award of Excellence in Public Procurement for 2019. The program places emphasis on continuous process improvement and outstanding purchasing practices. Earning this award serves as confirmation of the significant quality of an agency's procurement process and demonstrations of the commitment and contributions to the public purchasing profession. This prestigious award is earned only by those organizations that demonstrate excellence by obtaining a high score based on standardized criteria, which measures innovation, organization, professionalism, source selection, productivity, e-procurement, process improvements, and leadership attributes of the procurement organization. The trophy was presented on Wednesday, May 15th, at FAPPO's 52nd Annual Conference and Trade Show in Fort Lauderdale. And I have that trophy right here to match yours there, Mr. Susan. And at this point of interest, this is the seventh year that our school district has won this award, and we are only one of 18 agencies in the state of Florida to receive this honor. The only other school districts include Orange, Seminole, and Volusia County Public Schools. My sincere appreciation goes out to the purchasing team for an exceptional job. Purchasing and Warehouse Services has truly distinguished themselves within the state. Now, I'd like to introduce to you our team members, and I'd like the director, Kristi Rodriguez, to start and come up here and grab the trophy. And we're going to have a photo op here. But our director, Kristi Rodriguez, our purchasing manager, Don Richter, is unable to be with us today. Senior buyers include, come on down, Will Hensman, Janice Ellis. And buyers are Nick Kanjer, Sean Hines, Heidi Dotson, Candy Cutel, Jennifer Wells. Our purchasing clerk is Michelle Cherry. Our administrative secretary- Our administrative secretary is April Terry. Warehouse supervisor Sandy Kimble, and our surplus specialist Kyle Gotti. And so if you folks would line up here, and if I could have Chairman Deskovic and Dr. Theddy, please come down, let's have a photo taken of these award winners.
Well, you know what? It's a lot of work to get the right deal and the minutia in there. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Novelli, and to your whole team. We appreciate the hard work that you do. Dr. Theddy, will you please tell us about the resolution on this morning's agenda?
Mrs. Deskovic and Board members, you will be asked to approve a resolution implementing a student crime watch program through the Central Florida Crime Line Speak Out Hotline and Fortify Florida programs with local law enforcement agencies to promote safety within its schools. Mr. Reed, will you please read the resolution for us?
Whereas the school board is the governing body of the Brevard County School District and constitutes a body corporate pursuant to Florida statutes, and whereas the board desires to keep its students safe, secure, and free from harm, whereas Florida statutes requires the board to implement a student crime watch program by resolution to promote responsibility among students and improve school safety, whereas the student crime watch program shall allow students and the community to anonymously relay information concerning unsafe and potentially harmful, dangerous, violent, or criminal activities, or the threat of these activities, to appropriate law enforcement agencies and school officials; and whereas the board provides a student crime watch program through Central Florida Crime Line Speak Out Hotline program and the Fortify Florida program, which reports information it receives through anonymous tips to the appropriate law enforcement agencies and school officials. Now therefore be it resolved. One, the foregoing recitals are true and correct and are incorporated herein in reference. And two, the school board of Brevard County, Florida hereby implements a student crime watch program through the Central Florida Crime Line Speak Out Hotline and Fortify Florida programs and local law enforcement agencies to promote safety within its schools by providing a mechanism that allows students and the community to anonymously relay information concerning unsafe and potentially harmful, dangerous, violent, or criminal activities, or the threat of these activities, to appropriate law enforcement agencies and school officials. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. What are the wishes of the Board?
I have two groups.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Belfort, second by Ms. McDougal. Any discussion? Motion passes 5-0. We're now on to the general public comment portion of our meeting. Though school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting. We have five speakers signed up this morning. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the Board Chairman. The Chairman may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the Chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children, who may be present or watching from home. We will begin with our first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, and identify the topic you will be discussing. Our first three speakers are Anthony Calucci, Vanessa Skipper, and Ron Bradley. Mr. Calucci.
Good morning, everyone.
Mr. Bradley. Okay. Mr. Calucci, you'll be second.
You did that last time.
Yes. I think I see a trend. Go ahead, Mr. Bradley.
Okay. I was up to four o'clock this morning trying to figure out what I was going to say, and I thank you, school board members. I know what's in your heart to do what's right. I have taken the time. I've got every board member, the schools that they represent, and some problems that the schools -- it's not problems, it's issues that you have in schools. And I hope that I've got the right information. I talked to someone earlier, and they said, "Well, I hope your information's not true." And I said, "Well, it's in the budget, and I hope the budget is right." So rather than embarrass anybody for what I'm going to say, I would like to talk with some of you people at the school board meeting to tell you some issues that I have found that maybe you can address it and won't embarrass anybody in the school system. Thank you. God bless you for your work, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Maybe we could direct you to Mr. Novelli, as he's still -- I'm not sure of the nature of his findings, but maybe you can help coordinate and get him to the right person, and if he needs to speak with us individually, we'll set appointments with you, Mr. Bradley. Thank you. Mr. Calucci.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. First off, I want to report that we were scheduling the vote on our contract for August 9. We do appreciate BPS's offer to use some of its communication tools if we were to hold the summer vote. However, we do not believe we would be exercising due diligence by conducting a contract vote over the summer when we cannot guarantee that all teachers would receive required communication about the vote, and while so many teachers are out of town due to summer break. We will not risk disenfranchising teachers. I will present the results of the vote at the August 13 school board meeting. As we head towards negotiations for next year's contract, let's review where we are on teacher pay. The fact is, Florida is 46th in the nation in teacher pay. We may be performing higher than the state average on standardized tests, but not for teacher pay. The fact is, Brevard County ranks 30th in average teacher pay in Florida, trailing the state average by $2,170, even though we are the third most experienced workforce. The fact is, we are amongst the worst-paid countries, worst-paid teachers in the entire country. The fact is, based on the decision that four of you made to accept the superintendent's recommendation, we will fall further behind our comparable counties. The $1,100 recurring raise is still less than what Osceola, Orange, and Volusia received last year. Whether you want to believe it or not, there are many unanswered questions about your 2018 budget. It is concerning that some of you are trying to rush us back to the table in order to offer us a 2% raise for next school year. It is an extremely twisted logic that giving $2,300, as recommended by the special magistrate, for 1819 is the same thing as giving $2,300 over two years. Those of you that are attrition deniers, I'm still waiting for you to explain to us why this average teacher salary has only increased $262 since 2013-14. In your quest to try to prove the union wrong, rather than ask your staff serious questions and hold them accountable, you miss the attrition dollar staring right at you. In addition to the $1.4 million attrition savings that Dr. Mullins figured out using some convoluted method, we all, including your CFO, just learned that an additional $3.1 million falls to the bottom line to cover a portion of the board's contribution to health insurance. $3.1 for health insurance, $1.4 for attrition, means when you're determining the cost of raises, it's actually $4.5 million less than your budgeting for. You didn't even know $3.1 was being taken from the bottom line for health insurance, even in mid-May. Your CFO was not able to explain that. Now, this isn't saying that I want healthcare costs to go up, but what I'm suggesting is you start asking hard questions of your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Ms. Skipper?
Good morning. Vanessa Skipper, Vice President, Brevard Federation of Teachers. I was fortunate this past week to spend my days with over 9,000 educators from around the nation. Educators from places like Oakland and Los Angeles, who took to the streets fighting for their students. Also taking to the streets with them were parent-teacher organizations who actually packed boxed lunches to take to those teachers on the strike lines. Let's not forget about the places like Kentucky, Oklahoma, Arizona, and West Virginia. And West Virginia is actually where it all started, and all of those are states just like us, states that are not allowed to strike, but they did it anyway. They showed in West Virginia that solidarity matters, because the people that joined them on the strike line, not just parents, but students, but also other public service workers. And when the teachers were offered a 5% raise, they turned it down and said, "Not until our other service workers, like the state police, get that raise as well," and solidarity matters. You may or may not know, but at the legislative hearing where four of you voted against a recommendation by a neutral third party, we had people hear from the firefighters, communication workers, machinists, letter carriers, and many other organizations, in addition to parents and students. The community wants our public schools funded, and the community wants the teachers to stay. I'm asking you all to think about the promises you made on the campaign trail. In addition to being among 9,000 educators, we had the opportunity to listen to 10 candidates who accepted our invitation. We invited all of them, 10 candidates for president. And some of them were full of lip service, and some of them had a very specific plan for how they would improve Title I funding and other funding measures that come from the federal government. Lip service versus a plan. So I'm asking, what is your plan? Because this situation is not getting better, and I've had candid conversations with all of you about the disparities that have happened in the past 10 years as far as teacher pay in this county. It is incumbent upon you to go to staff and say, "This is what needs to be done. Make it happen." I appreciate that funding comes from the legislature. However, they are pointing the fingers back at you. Teachers are writing them, they're writing our education commissioners, and the letters they are receiving says, "The power to raise teacher salary is in the hands of the school board members." We also had the opportunity to hear from the 2019 National Teacher of the Year out of Virginia, and he said this about politicians who promised to raise teacher pay and school funding. It's time to write the checks your mouths are cashing. We're ready.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. Our last two speakers are Kathy West and Lucille Hornsabitz. Is Ms. West here? Okay. Oh, Ms. West.
How y'all doing today?
Good morning.
I'm a substitute teacher. My name is Kathleen West, and I'm here on behalf of the subs and teachers. We are in a sub crisis. Many counties have been bumped up to $15 an hour for sub pay. Brevard County is lagging behind. Many counties offer perks for their subs. The sub pay has not been raised in 10 years. I would like to know how we are supposed to pay our bills if we haven't gotten a raise in 10 years. Basically, schools are at a disadvantage at the expense of the subs and other teachers. Where's our sub pay and our increases and our bonuses? I had to ride the bus down here because I can't afford a better car, which is pretty That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Thank you.
One second. Can you keep her close? Ms. West, can you wait just one second? We're going to let the last speaker go, and it sounds like some of our school board members might have some questions for you.
I'd be glad to step down and let her get answered.
No, let's finish with our public comments. If you would like to go ahead, that way we can keep on schedule, and then we'll ask her to come back up. So can you state your name for me, please, ma'am?
It's going to be kind of hard, it's a long one. I'm married for love, not the name. My name is Lucille Hornsabitz.
Hornsabitz.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Hornsabitz.
Okay. I'm from Palm Bay, Florida, and I'm a mother of two and grandmother of six, which brings me to, first of all, I want to say thank you for having the Pledge of Allegiance said. That got rid of one of my concerns. What I'd like to know is whether or not the Pledge of Allegiance is also said in our schools. Is it?
Every day. Yes, ma'am.
Yay! Okay. Number two, I'm understanding, and I hope not, that the Koran is being forced, pushed on our kids in school. Is that true or not true?
No.
Koran teaching?
No.
No?
No.
Yay! All right. Yay, America. Okay. Not that I'm prejudiced, but, you know. Number two, so gender-neuter teaching, is that being pushed in our schools?
I think it's a little complicated with five of us and going back and forth, and we want to make sure we have accurate information to all of your requests.
Okay.
So if you could, if you have a statement, read your whole statement. If you have questions, we can maybe, we'll get you with Dr. Sullivan in the back. She's head of all secondary school leading and learning. She'll be able to answer each of those for you, and she has 100% accurate information.
Okay. So is Common Core taught in schools? Again?
We're going to let you read them all out, and then she can answer them for you.
And is history still being taught in our schools? Seriously? History?
Yeah, I taught it.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yay! Well, that's great, because I understand, of course, it's via the social media, that in a lot of schools, that's not happening, and that's very sad. So I'm glad we're sticking with the three Rs in history, and, okay. I think that will conclude. I'll go back and see Dr. Sullivan then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, so much. Dr. Sullivan is -- will you raise your hand so she can see who you are right there? Thank you so much. Okay. It's a little out of the ordinary, but Ms. West, we're going to ask you to come back up. I think some board members have a few questions for you, if you're okay with that.
That's fine. I guess.
Okay. I know we tried to address the substitute issue a couple of years ago with a different board before the new board was up here, and so clearly, we need to do better. Mr. Susan, did you have a question for Ms. West?
Where is your home base at? What schools do you normally go to?
I do the north end. I can't afford to come to the south end.
No, I got you. So you're up in the Titusville area?
Yes.
Which is one of the identified areas that we have. The other question is, is that on that scale, are you a retired teacher? Are you, where do you fall on that retire, on that scale?
I'm a sub, and I'm a degreed sub.
Okay.
So I make a little bit more than the entry-level subs, and I still can't make it.
No, I understand. Thank you. I think all the rest of the questions, Ms. Belfort, since she's from our area.
Ms. Belfort?
First, thank you. I'm the Titusville representative on the board, and so I certainly appreciate your service to our community. You made a comment, and please don't assume that I'm dismissing the subject of pay, because it's something that I think we need to continue to look at, but you made a comment that many counties offer perks. And I'm curious, what perks could be offered that would benefit you as a substitute?
Many of the counties offer perks to their sub. They may offer them free lunch. They may offer them free lunch, because when you, when you're called at the moment's notice in the morning, a lot of times, you're not, don't have enough time to pack a lunch. So a lot of times, I'm just running out the door, getting ready and running out the door.
Right. So free lunch from the cafeteria, or do they?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else that you can think of that would?
That's it, that I can think of right now.
Okay. If you, if you think of anything else, could you, I will, some, Ms. Klein, could you please give her my email address? And if there's anything else that you think of that we could do as far as sub support, would you please drop me an email and let me know?
Okay.
And Ms. Klein is in the back of the room. She'll, she's raising her hand for you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much. Y'all have a good night.
Ma'am, ma'am.
We still have more questions.
I live across the street from a substitute, and she pings me all the time. One of the issues that she was mentioning is that we used to have a system that the substitutes use that allowed them to network within the different schools, and we cut that system off. Were you a part of that by any chance? It was an online system that alerted them to different, you were not a part of that?
They still use, it's not ASOP, it's something else. I'm drawing a blank right now.
Smart fine. Smart fine.
Smart fine, yes.
Right. But the other piece, you weren't. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions for Ms. West? Thank you so much. We are, we're gonna get to work on this one and try to, to help, to help you on our substitutes out.
Okay.
If you could get with Ms. Klein. Ms. Klein?
Okay.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any comments for any of the other public speakers before we move on? Ms. Belford?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Kalachi and Ms. Skipper. I think, I understand your reasoning for not going for a vote on the contract sooner, but I think knowing, you know, at least what the plan is, is beneficial for all of us. So thank you for getting to that as soon as you can. We appreciate it.
I want to say thank you to Ron Bradley for cutting off Anthony and Vanessa and getting up to the stage first. It shows your initiative, and I really want to say thank you for that.
Oh, my gosh. All right. On that note, we're gonna get back to our meeting. It moves us to the consent agenda. Dr. Thady?
There are, there are 19 agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Thank you. Does any board member wish to pull any items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to pull the following for lengthy discussion. If I could pull F-16, F-18, F-21, F-24, and F-27, please.
Pam?
Do you want me to read them again, Pam?
Do you have those?
16, 18, 21, 24, 27.
That's it.
Oh, Ms. Belford?
If I could pull F-17, F-19, and F-22, please?
F-19, F-22, and I want to pull F-31. Pam, are you able to keep up with everything that's going on?
We may need a rest.
Would anyone else like to pull any items from the agenda?
Okay.
I would like to entertain a motion to accept the items with the exception of?
After further thought, Madam Chair, I would like to remove my following lengthy discussion items from the board. F-16, F-18, F-21, F-24, and F-27.
I think, Dr. Thady, I think a joke's being played on you.
I figured that out very quickly. Much appreciated. Thank you. That was not funny.
Pam, did?
Dr. Thady, that was Pam's idea, just so you know.
Pam looked shocked.
Did you inform Pam you were doing that, Mr. Susan?
I did.
Oh, okay. So Pam, you know. Okay. So I do want to make sure we're clear on how we're moving forward. Ms., Mr. Susan, is there anything you want to pull?
I removed all of my pulled items for the consent agenda.
Ms. Belford, is, were you wanting to pull those three, or were you?
I had to remove all of my three pulls and place them back on the consent agenda.
I truly want to pull F-30, or, oh, no. There is no F-31. I'm in action. Gosh, we are a fine group between us. Don't disrupt the flow. Okay.
Dr. Mullins is never gonna leave again.
I, I still need to entertain a motion to accept the?
Move to approve.
Consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote.
Oh, my gosh.
Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Campbell, are you okay?
All right, Ms. Campbell.
That stressed you out?
It did.
I think we stressed out some staff members in the back as well. They were having heart attacks back there. Sorry, guys.
Sorry. Pam's idea.
And we know who the troublemaker is up here, and it's not Pam. Okay. Onto, we will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Thady?
Thank you. The first item is G-30 on department-school-initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Thady?
The next item is G-31, pertaining solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion?
You have to.
Yeah, I have a, a little bit of discussion. We've had this pulled a couple times. My?
Which one?
Oh, we heard.
31.
It's G-31, Cheryl, if you want to click on it. It's the, the contract for Cigna, for pharmaceuticals. So most of us, did everyone receive the emails between my representative on the CYAC, Ms. Butterfield, and then the responses from Ms. Zirker? Okay. So I went through some of those in detail, and we've been able to answer, Ms. Zirker answered most of them to my satisfaction. I still had some concerns, and I just want to see if anyone else has concerns on, on some of these same issues. So I called Ms. Envallo yesterday with some of them. One of the things that still bothers me about the contract is the class-action lawsuit waiver, that we are saying that we cannot bring a class-action lawsuit. And I also called RSM last night just to get some input from them on a few of these items. One of the other things that was really bothering me was the, the tight controls on us being able to audit the prescription process and what was going on. And it did seem too strict to me, and we were really put in a box. But RSM said that was kind of standard language, and that you see that in most contracts. So I obviously am like, okay, well. Our auditors say that they're comfortable with those parameters to do an audit, then, then I'm, then I'm good with that. They couldn't answer to the, I spoke with two people at RSM, and they said they had not ever seen in a contract the class-action lawsuit waiver. So it basically says in, in the contract that we waive our rights to ever be part of a class-action lawsuit against them. Does anyone else take issue with that, or am I out on a lone, a lone island with that? Mr. Susan, you have a lot of experience with this, in this field, with being in insurance sales.
There was that one, and then I had a quick question from Mark. So the class-action lawsuit does?
One second. Do you need Mr. Lindorff to come to the front?
Just real quick on another one of them, just for clarification, because I think it was one, but yes, the class-action lawsuit does have some concern that I have.
Okay. And maybe you can speak to that, that one, Mr. Lindorff?
Mark, just real quick. There's a plan design trigger that allows them to, there was something in there that we were getting, and I just wanted to give you the opportunity to explain it, that in the event that we change anything, they can change the contract. And the only reason that I was asking, and I'm sorry I didn't preemptive you with this before, is if we do go straight to our local clinics for pharmacy eventually, would that renegotiate the rate PBM that we're paying?
I, I don't think, it just depends on what, what the CYAC committee would recommend with that. So at this point, we don't have anything that would be in contrary to what Cigna's contract says.
Okay.
Obviously, we'd have to see what the recommendations are from the board, as well as the CYAC committee, to find out if it would affect the contract in any way.
So what you're saying is, is that if we did go directly to our pharmacies, that's not something we're not gonna do until next year? And in the event, then, we would have to go through CYAC to create that?
That is correct.
And then, and then that would be something that at that time, we would either renegotiate with Cigna or start another contract?
That is correct.
Okay.
We, we can't do anything without getting, that going through negotiations with our unions as well.
Right.
So we can't make any changes at all unless that?
No, I got you. I just wanted, there was a little bit of clarification there. And then, the fiduciary responsibility, you tend to be very, very strong on that with other entities. You feel comfortable with that being where it is inside the contract?
All, all adjusters, including health insurance, are claims fiduciaries. They have a responsibility to be our fiduciary. Actually, the language in the contract says if they are not acting within, as a fiduciary, we can terminate the contract immediately.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you for those clarifications.
Sure.
If you can, just one more thing. Back to the, the class-action lawsuit waiver, is this something that has been in our contracts before? Is this something new? Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
It's been in our past contracts. It, it really just depends on what the legal ramifications are. That's the dispute resolution process. What Cigna would prefer is that we go through an arbitration process rather than do a class action. Frankly, as your risk manager, I'm not a big key proponent of, of class-action lawsuits. I'd rather bring a case against them directly. So it didn't bother me to have that language in the contract. Obviously, I can't speak for Amy Envallo. I'm not sure what her opinion is on that.
We spoke, so I, I, we're on the same page with them. There's nothing that precludes us from bringing a suit individually if we need to do so.
Have we ever done that before?
No.
Mark, one last question is, is that on the, sorry, on the 25th last agenda item, we had a disparity between, it was 19 per month per employee and $36 per month per family member. There was kind of a difference there, and now it's just 36 flat. Was there a mix-up? What was going on there?
My math error.
Okay.
It's always been $36 per employee per month.
Got it.
There are only, there's, if you look at our billing, because that's the easiest way to look at it, is find out what they've been charging us. There's two different charges. There's a $17 and a $19 charge. Combined, it's 36.
Okay.
That's remaining the same.
Okay.
And so it's a per-employee-per-month charge of $36.
Got it. All right.
Ms. Belford?
I, Mr. Lindorff or Ms. Envallo, feel, feel free, whoever is, is maybe better suited to answer the question. So in the event that something occurred and we decided to file suit against Cigna, if there was a class-action lawsuit already filed against them, does that prohibit us from filing individually against them?
No.
And?
As a separate, we can't join a class-action lawsuit.
Okay. But it's, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop us from moving forward on anything if, if there was something else out there. And then, second question being, do we, by, by signing the contract, do we prohibit our employees from taking part in any class-action lawsuit against them?
No.
That's a good question. Okay. Thank you.
Those individuals have the right full legal redress with the law that they would have, yeah.
Skipper, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Lindorff. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Lindorff?
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on agenda item F-31? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Thady?
The next three items are policies. Each were brought forth to staff during a work session on May 28, 2019. A rule development workshop was held on June 25, 2019, giving the public its first opportunity for public comment. The policies came before the board as an information item on June 25. Today will be the second opportunity for public comment, after which time the board will take action by a vote.
I declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone who has come to address Board Policy 5120 assignment within the district? Is there anyone that has come to address the board on Board Policy 5120 assignment within the district? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Campbell, second by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We move on to our next policy. Is there anyone who has come to make public comments concerning Policy 5121, Controlled Open Enrollment? Mr. Bradley, would you like to speak on our Policy 5121, Controlled Open Enrollment?
If I understand you right, what I think, my daughter, is this a safety for, what I'm concerned is, my daughter lives right across the street from the Palm Bay High School. And when the band practices for football practice, that sometimes it's night, and they have to bring their zylophones down out in the street, and there's no streetlight there. And the sidewalk is only four feet wide. So I think it need to be addressed either to widen the sidewalk or put a streetlight there. Because when it's dark and those kids come down that street, and I tell you, they come down that street, and?
Thank you, Ms.
Something might happen, and I don't want that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. If you can see Ms. Hand in the back. Ms. Hand, can you speak with Mr. Bradley about the possibility of either working with the city or figuring out how to maybe get that area lit a little bit more? I will ask one more time, is there anyone that has come to speak on public, or on Policy 5121, Controlled Open Enrollment? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Our last policy for this morning is School Board Policy 7120. Is there anyone who's come to address Policy 7120, Criteria for Balancing School Membership to Capacity? Is there anyone that's come this morning to, to address the board on Policy 7120, Criteria for Balancing School Membership to Capacity? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Belford, second by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. That concludes the public hearing portion of this meeting. Dr. Thady?
The last item under the action agenda is Item G-35 on the Florida Educational Equity Act Annual Update 2019-20.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Susan, second by Ms. Belford. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review that will be brought back for action at a later meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Thady?
There are three items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss any of the items on the information agenda? Would any board member, we're gonna move on to board reports. Is there any discussion points or reports that a board member would like to get? Mr. Susan? Mr. Susan?
Just wanted to remind the board that there was a push for a possible pilot up in the Titusville area for subs last year when we were dealing with the Kelly Services, and it didn't go down. And just to bring you guys up to speed, Kelly Services was going to come in and privatize our substitutes, and we found that there was an increased cost. So what we were trying to do is possibly look internally instead of that increased cost. And one of the things was, we identified all of those schools up in Titusville that had an issue, and I was wondering if we could get that information, that substitute information, to our new board members, just with the totals from last year. I know this year's kind of probably still being compiled, but it should be easy to pull. That way, you guys can take a look at it. We had talked about some of the ideas to move forward, including specifically targeting certain schools by having a raise in those schools. So like if a substitute makes $12 an hour here, they make $14 if they go there. Show that if there is an increase, it would be a pilot program, then they could go from there. And there was a lot of other issues that were discussed at that, but I just kind of wanted to get you guys that information from last year so that you guys could be brought up to speed.
I feel like we probably need to revisit this at some depth, so maybe we do want to give direction to start this up again.
If I can add one more discussion point, I've talked with Matt Reed a few times before about this issue, about going back with our legislative ask. I think we need to look at that again, about asking the legislature to change some of the rules of retirees in certain job descriptions to be able to come back. Because I know that our Supervisor of Elections, Lori Scott, presented to our legislative delegation in January her request for them to change that, because it affects her ability to hire poll workers. Because if, those are, that's some of the people that she draws from, is retirees to come and work the polls during election years, and we've got a huge, this problem won't be solved before the 2020 election cycle, but it's a big year for her. And so if we can pool our resources and our think tank, you know, resources with organizations like the Supervisor of Elections Office, because there's lots of organizations that would benefit from our retirees being able to come back sooner. So I think we need, I know we didn't...
They could change it, and make it effective.
Yeah, they can. So anyway, just another partner in that battle.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I think it's safe that we could give direction to Dr. Thady to get on to Dr. Mullins to tell you, Dr. Thady, to put together, maybe as a part of a workshop, or however you guys see appropriate, for us to start having some offline discussions of where we want to go with this.
Okay, thank you. I have it.
Thank you. Mr. Susan?
Yeah, so there was another legislative ask that I was working on with Dr. Mullins, and I kind of wanted to speak to the rest of the board, because I hadn't had an opportunity to. But we have our pre-K that we were talking about earlier for some of those requirements. They're also, just so you guys know, forced to go into drop at 57, not later. There's a bunch of other requirements that are inside of there. I met with a bunch of pre-K teachers and listened to their demands, gave that to Dr. Mullins to add to it. But I did just want to give you a heads up that that pre-K, I think we could really focus in on a couple of asks besides the requirements for the testing and stuff like that, but also let them retire at a later rate. There's no reason why not, right? And stuff like that. So I think that if we could formulate a platform there, it would really significantly help our elementary schools in the transition from those younger kids into our K programs. Sorry, I know Misty looks like you're chomping at some, you want to say something?
I was just going to add on to the pre-K issue.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Belford.
Absolutely, Mr. Susan. In addition to the fact that our pre-K teachers don't qualify for best and brightest bonuses, and I think there are, I think our legislative environment is ripe for really creating some positive changes in early childhood education, because I think there is beginning to be an understanding that it has long-term impact in the K-12 system. Not that I want funds taken away from K-12 to support early childhood, because I think we're scarce on funding as it is, but I think that there is opportunity as a state for us to focus on really beefing up early childhood, which would take some of the challenges that